Wrap it up?
Yeah.
All right, so as interesting as this walk down Amnesia Lane is, we are at that time of night, it's 6:01 on a Thursday, the first Thursday of the month, so I'm gonna call to order the regular select board meeting. Bless you. And the first thing is set a just agenda. What do we have?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, we need to... Um, this or December. Oh, no, the charter minutes, we need to approve one.
Oh, okay. So add that to the approved minutes, um, the charter minutes?
Yep.
And is there a date?
The special meeting.
Hearing.
On November eighteenth.
And there was a special meeting, there was a public hearing.
Just pulled this off. Turn the pages in.
Minutes from...
November eighteenth.
Public hearing, November eighteenth. Okay. Kaylee?
Was it the eighteenth or the sixteenth?
Eighteenth is on this page. I believe that's correct.
We were going to add an executive session for what did we decide? If it goes per cell?
Discussing.
Labor?
Contracts.
Contracts. Potential, we're discussing potential contracts down possibly contracting for PD services. And so that falls under BSA...
Can we look that up for you?
Five, isn't it five thirteen? I'll have my phone.
While you're checking that, um, do we have a report from Tom at all?
Chapter one.
No, no road foreman report tonight?
Or title one.
Okay.
Contract. It is an allowed thing, but we, uh, the league suggests that we cite the reason right in the, when we make the motions. So we have it by, Kaylee, you have it by the time you make the motion?
Uh, I don't know.
Which will be in like two hours?
Yes, I will definitely have it by then.
Okay, perfect. All right, so anything else that we need to add to our agenda? Force of trust?
The only thing I was wondering is if we should, do we want, do we need, do, would we, I don't know if the public are here to talk about the mask mandate, but if we move that to the top?
It's item number four.
It's item four, okay.
Oh, you're asking if we should reshuffle?
We don't have to, but.
Yeah. I think.
It's a short agenda.
Norm is probably here to talk about budgets.
Okay.
Which is up first.
Not right now, but we're at six.
No, no. I mean, it's first after we do all our, we have to do all our preamble.
Let's leave it.
So could we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended to include approving minutes from a public hearing November eighteenth and add an executive session at the end to discuss police contracts?
So. Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, town manager's report, Mr. Upson.
All right. I like to keep these short, that was, uh, good advice from John Jewett.
Keep it short?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the VORAC grant was submitted on Monday to the Patrion Bridge part. Our community development coordinator worked hard on this.
Hang on, pause.
Time out, we didn't do this.
Did I just skip?
Yeah, you did.
You skipped all the minutes.
I skipped all the minutes after we added them, sorry, pause.
Time out.
All right, all right, all right, so minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the special meeting minutes of November sixteenth, the regular meeting minutes of November eighteenth, and the special meeting minutes of November eighteenth as written.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, does anybody have any comments on any of those?
They were great.
They were good, yeah.
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion's in.
And one abstention, motion carries. All right, now we go on to.
Check.
VORAC grant submitted, which is awesome news.
Yes, and a special thanks to Helen Beatty for her input and work on this. She had a lot of good, good stuff, and I wanna give her credit. The Act one sixty-four task force is, will be functioning soon. I've signed Dave Gross, the Planning Commission Chair, and Dr. De Giulio, the Hazen Principal. They have agreed to take part in the task force, and Michael Dearing is going to, and then I have two more potentials. Hopefully they can meet three times before town meeting and go over what they need to go over, so they can present any, um, you know, they can be experts in the field for that, so we can move forward with some good, uh, good knowledge before the town makes a decision on the retail cannabis establishments. I met with, uh, the president of Kiwanis in Hardwick, Sherry Lusher, they're starting to plan their spring festival. Hopefully they can have it, it hasn't been available for the last two years. Hoping to have more floats and working on a plan for the Atkins Field activities following the parade. So we're kinda at the beginning stages of the collaboration effort on that. West Woodbury Mountain plowing. The current arrangement is not equitable for the town, I suggest a conversation with their board. What, basically what's happening up there, uh, you guys, you're familiar with Lake Brook Road, West Woodbury. One of our trucks takes care of that road, a total of three miles we have for years, and there's almost thirty residences up there in Woodbury. So the town of Woodbury is collecting property tax revenue on these residences, and we're maintaining the roads in, in, uh, in exchange for a couple days of hauling sand in the summertime. So that's wear and tear on the truck all winter, plowing, pushing back the banks with the grader if need be, and sand and paying somebody overtime to take care of this road. Cause most of the time, Pearly's out, the guys are out there on overtime, I would say two-thirds of the, maybe not two-thirds of the time, but, um, I just, I don't think it's fair that we're doing this for nothing. And even if there's some, um, compensation with a truck and hauling sand in the summer months, it's, it's not a winter's worth of road maintenance and clearing. So with your permission, I'd like to approach the town of Woodbury with some preliminary numbers. Tom and I talked about it, and it was about eighteen thousand dollars that they're getting for maybe twenty-five to three thousand dollars in the, for summer sand, or summer sand hauling. I think it's important that you, you gotta pay to play, so.
Well, we're kinda doing them a favor to, to some degree, right? Because we don't have to clear their roads.
No.
But for them to do it would be very inconvenient, because there's no direct connection from West Woodbury back into Woodbury. They'd have to come through Hardwick to get there.
Correct. And I just feel that, you know, there's plenty of residences up there that...
So there's revenue for them.
There's definitely, yes.
Yeah.
A lot of them are second, you know, some of them are second homes, no homestead declarations. And, uh, uh, I would say a large, a portion of their tax revenue is not residential stuff. It's a lot of camps and stuff, so I think they're, they're doing well.
Yeah, and it probably is not something that was intentionally set up to be disadvantageous to Hardwick, but now that you've looked at it and noticed it.
It's good catch.
Yeah, probably oughta talk to them. It's, so, does the board generally agree that we want you to follow up? Yeah.
Okay.
Great, that would be awesome.
Okay. That's it for me, let's see, you have any questions on any else?
That was quick.
Does anybody remember when the, when did we hear about that, is it not until?
Then the seventeenth is when we need to be available for any questions.
Of December?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize it would be that quick.
Yeah, they're, they're reviewing it, and they said the seven people, we need to be by the phone.
Okay. Great.
If they have any questions. It was a group email, it wasn't just us, so.
All right.
Good deal.
Jeff's not available that day.
But you are.
I will be, yeah.
He will be.
And hopefully Helen.
Yeah. Good.
Jeff will be at the Birdsong doing beer tastings for his business, if anybody wants to stop in.
Oh, cheers.
All right, so.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Next up, Hardwick Police Department report, Mr. Coughrim.
Okay, um, first, you have the last two weeks, um, eleven nineteen to twenty-one, twelve one to twenty-one. So you have the calls, the top ten incident types there. Two pages in, you have the top ten incident types of the same two weeks of twenty twenty.
Uh, hang on, where is it?
Just two pages in.
Got it.
So you have, you have a comparison chart of two, two weeks, the two-week time period.
Yeah.
So one of the things that I noted.
Thieves.
What's that?
We're having some thefts.
We're having some thefts, so, um, it did not make the, during that time period, which is only two weeks, but, uh, did not make the top ten in twenty twenty, it did in twenty-one. Five in, uh, in, uh, twenty twenty-one. Also, the, uh, citizen disputes, um, were higher in twenty twenty, so they're actually down by two in twenty-one. Property damage accidents, uh, were about relatively the same, again, with alarms were the same. One other difference, major difference that we saw was that juvenile problems didn't make the top ten in twenty twenty and did in twenty-one. And this will be more significant a little bit later on, as we go through a little bit more of them. So that was a, Kaylee, he had talked about comparisons, and so that was just a comparison on this particular one of, of the same two-week period last year and this year.
That's great, I appreciate it.
So then, um, we go on to the, uh, after that, we go on to the top five locations, which referenced last meeting is hotspots. So that shows the, the areas of, of activity. Now, it, just to clarify, that doesn't mean that a certain particular hotspot of town was a high crime, crime area. As, as OP and I talked at the last meeting, there may be more patrols in that area, there, you know, et cetera, et cetera. This shows there was more activity on our part, doesn't necessarily mean it's negative activity.
So it's not necessarily there, like, calls from these places.
Exactly, exactly. So what I did, you have, I have a report of top five locations. The next report you have is the media log report for those two weeks. So, um, you know, like Sherry, I think you were asking last meeting about, well, what, you know, Highland Avenue is, is one that you had asked about. So you can actually go to the media log report, and it shows in there, um, what those calls were. There are actually, actually patrols, uh, in that area. So it wasn't negative activity in that area, it was just there was more patrols in that particular area, so. So the media log report cross-references with, uh, what those top five locations. If you had any questions as to what, um, what the activity was in, in that area.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I think, I'm just curious, uh, top five locations, we have South Main Street, and we have, I see, just scanning through, I see we have some directed patrols. What is it when there's somebody at a crosswalk at the elementary school?
Some of those were done, it, it depends on how they call it in, some are directed patrols, some are foot patrols.
Okay.
It depends on how the officer calls them in directly.
But that, that.
Some don't get called in at all.
But it might show up as activity?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep. It's, it's a hotspot, but it can also be positive activity and not necessarily negative.
Like in that case, South Main, some of those ten might be.
Right. Whereas a crosswalk is positive, is positive activity, an example of positive activity. But it's where we spend, you know, some time.
Yeah, got it.
So if your hell shows up in that neighborhood, it's not negative, it's just, just that we were there a fair amount. So that's what those were there. Let's see, now we go on to the next report. You have fourteen pages of twenty twenty. At the end of those fourteen pages, you have the identical report for twenty twenty-one. This is for the whole year, so this went, well, minus most of December, but this is one-one twenty twenty to twelve-one twenty twenty, and the same for twenty-one. So this is kind of a, um, the different notes that I made in this, this gives you a broader range of comparison from year to year as to increase or decrease in calls. So some of the things that I noticed, uh, looking through this and going through it, suspicious, suspicious events, um, actually increased by thirty-two more over twenty twenty. Increase, yeah, thirty-two additional. So, uh, and to clarify what suspicious events are, they're, they're broad. But some very common things that fall into suspicious events is drug activity. What happens is when a call, when, when a caller calls the call center or the dispatch center, they give the dispatcher what they have for available information. Now, it could particularly be a, a common one, uh, for drug activity has been, we've had calls come in from somebody who saw a driver slumped over the steering wheel in a parking lot. Well, the dispatcher doesn't really have enough information to classify this as any particular thing, so it falls under suspicious activity when they enter it into the computer, and then we go from there. So, so drug activity, a lot of times, the dispatcher and the caller doesn't have enough, don't have enough information. So it goes, falls under suspicious activity category in this. So that increased by thirty-two in, in twenty twenty-one. That's not the only thing in that, but that's a very common one, uh, drug activity is a very common one under suspicious activity. Motor vehicle complaints, um, increased in twenty twenty-one as well. We saw an increase there. And let's see, citizen dispute was relatively the same, it was down by, by two in twenty-one, but, uh, relatively about the same. Alarms increased in twenty twenty-one, and I'll go over the, those as well, the big, some of the big ones, there's more explanations. Property damage only accidents, uh, was relatively consistent. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one stayed about the same, about level across that. So, uh, some of the, one thing that was good to see going through this, uh, there was a decrease in, uh, traffic accidents with injury. We had, let's see, twenty-one in twenty twenty, which are relatively major accidents if you're having, you know, obviously if you have personal injury to those. Uh, we had twenty-one of those, that did decrease to, uh, seven in twenty twenty-one, so there was a, a large increase. I'm sure there's a lot of different factors that go into that. Uh, we have observed less cars on the road, um, I think due to probably a lot more, uh, working from home, a lot of, a lot of people working on computers, so I'm sure that's a factor, having less vehicles on the road. And I'm sure there's probably a number of factors in that. The good news is that less people were hurt in twenty-one than they were in twenty, uh, due to traffic crashes. The people leaving the scene of an accident actually increased, um, in twenty-one. Generally, those are non-injury, as those, a lot of, we see that a lot in parking lots. Uh, somebody bumped the car, or somebody does whatever, and figures they can get out of there before anybody sees it, is a lot of what it boils down to, so, um, but those did increase a little bit. So the next alarms is the next one I had, there were sixty-nine alarms in, um, twenty twenty, that increased to eighty in twenty twenty-one. And just to give an update on that, I have written the policy. Town manager is, has, has been reviewing it, and we're gonna meet to go over anything he sees and I see, and then we'll have that to bring to you, so that's been all in process.
So I'm surprised, and maybe it's just my prejudice coming through, but I would have suspected we would have seen a.
Actually saw an increase, yeah.
So there are alarms in Hardwick.
A lot, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, that doesn't mean there's eighty separate alarms.
Yeah.
Some of those.
Are repeats.
Are repeats, um, obviously, but, but yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought the same thing. And so looking at this showed there was a lot of alarm responses just in Hardwick alone. So those aren't fire alarm, that's a whole separate category. Those are just police, police alarms, burglary alarms, et cetera. So that we would respond to on a regular basis, so.
And some of them turn out to be false. Some of them turn out to be people entering.
Ninety percent of them.
Entering and not entering their passcode or whatever.
Yep, yep. So, um, OP and I have been working on that policy, uh, so that's all been in process, and we're reviewing all that. We'll try to bring out the most tweaked policy we can to you to.
To try to reduce.
To review and then give us more, more suggestions.
Use the tweaky.
Yeah, but the, the purpose is to reduce the repeats, right?
Yes.
Wasting the police time, basically.
Police and fire, um, you know.
Fire shows up as well.
Well, depends, I mean, fire alarm is a whole separate thing, so, um, they're, they're responding to alarms as well. So I don't know what their numbers are, but, but ultimately, the emergency services, they would be, you know, reducing those responses. You'd be putting, you're putting, it, it, it's a liability, especially to a false alarm, you're putting, you know, a vehicle, an officer, or you're putting multiple firemen, firewomen, um, trucks, very expensive trucks on the road for false alarms, so, so ultimately, yeah, if we, we would, we would hope to reduce that. Those numbers. Animal problems, we did see an increase from thirty-five to forty-three in twenty-one. Assaults, um, also saw an increase, uh, from three to eleven in twenty-one.
Wanted people.
Wanted people was a, was a.
Significant increase.
Yep, significant increase.
From four to twelve.
I can tell you my theory on that.
At least a lot of unwanted people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's tricky.
Yeah.
That's a direct correlation to the courts.
Oh.
Oh.
Cause they let people out. Like they don't hold people.
And then they don't come back in to court when they're supposed to, so the court issues, so it puts more burden back on to your local level, your, your police officers, et cetera, so.
So then you're supposed to go look for people.
It's, excuse me, it's really hard to hear what you're saying.
Ah, okay, we'll try to speak up.
Thank you.
Sure.
I missed that whole little part.
Ah, well, basically the gist was that there, the last bit was that there are more wanted people.
I heard that.
Yep, and that the possible, the most likely reason is that the courts are letting people go instead of keeping them, and then if they don't come back to their appointed date, then they become a wanted person and they ask the PD, PD to go find them.
Citizen disputes relatively, um, it was down by two, is a relatively consistent, about the same. Let's see here.
I just wanted to jump in, it's really great information to see. And I'm wondering if, I have a couple of questions now, but if we can also ask questions for our next meeting too, cause it's also a lot of.
More information, yeah.
But it's great, this is like exactly, it's so interesting to see the two, the two different weeks, and then also to see, you know, that we've got, the majority of our calls are at Main Street, but then seeing, you know, being able to look pretty quickly and see that most of those are directed patrol, which isn't necessarily, like, it's, I think it's really, really valuable to look at.
Positive versus negative, so you have proactive policing versus reactive.
Yeah, I do have a question about just the, the year comparison, but I don't want, I don't wanna interrupt your.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Is it okay? I'm just curious about, as, looking at all, there's a lot of data here, but it seems like in general, most of the, like, just, most of the total months are down compared to last year. Like October was five hundred and ninety-six, and this year it's two eighty-three. Um, May was, there's some that are up, but most of them seem to be going down, is there a reason? Do you think there's like a reason for that, other than it's just?
There's a couple, well, I think, I would, I would relate it to a couple of reasons that I can come up with. One would be, um, that we're not patrolling in Greensboro. That would be one. The other reason would be that we're not able to do the, as much proactive stuff, so you have a lot of calls that are generated either, you know, reactive, so you're reacting to calls that are coming in. When they're doing that with half the staff, which, you know, we've had people in the military, et cetera, in deployment, so you have less people that are able to go out there, um, for proactive and initiate, you know, and find, uh, some of those incidents as well. So I think there's a couple, you know, a couple of reasons.
Potentially that's because we haven't been able to do as mu, been able to do as much directed patrol this year that we might have done.
Right.
Last year.
Right.
Okay, cause we had.
That's a theory.
I mean, if we could like dig really deep, we'd probably answer that, but, um, and then, so you're also saying that basically the six months, was it six months of last year? That we had Greensboro under.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
Contract was, is also swaying, okay. That makes sense.
So that's my theory.
Yeah, and maybe.
Somebody may disagree with that.
It was raining last October too, so I'm trying to figure out like if Halloween was just like that much more rumpious last year. Cause that's a lot.
Well, Halloween last year, we didn't even do, we weren't even able to do the, what we normally do because of, because of the COVID last year, so.
Almost six hundred incidents last October is a lot, that's a lot, cause we're busy.
Yeah, but if you take out, you know, the last year, the most, the number one incident was directed patrol, which doesn't even show up in the top ten for this year, so if you just remove that, I bet that things look a lot more similar.
Yeah, that's really interesting, it's really interesting.
Uh, let's see, we had, uh.
It is nice to compare, to look at these numbers and remove the directed patrol, to see the trends, the crime trends.
Yeah.
Because directed patrol is basically your proactive policing.
Right.
It's a documentation of your activity.
Of our time, yeah, yeah. Yep. Let's see, we assisted fires as well, um, so that was pretty consistent from last year to this year for our assists, uh, to the fire department. Foot patrol, um, there was a larger increase in, uh, foot patrol. And again, that may be documented and getting that, um, importance of documenting data so that our time is, is tracked more, um, but I think we were around thirty. Yeah, around thirty cases of foot patrol, and we only had two documented in twenty twenty, so that's a big difference, so. Fraud was down, uh, we had ten cases of fraud in twenty twenty and seven in twenty-one, so, uh, that was good. Some of these trends, and I'll, I'll throw this in, cause the next one that I have is intoxication. That increased, uh, to eleven intoxicated people that we dealt with in twenty-one. Versus, uh, twenty twenty was three intoxicated persons. And we've often talked in, about, uh, the effects of COVID on people's mental status. And I think some of these calls, uh, when you look at some of the different trends of calls, the, you know, the intoxicated persons was, was one. We've seen, you know, even the state themselves put out statistics that they were seeing a large increase in alcohol sales during COVID, and when people are home, so, you know, this is all relating back to, um, possibly to, you know, the mental state during, during COVID, and people having to be locked up and not, and not as much interaction, and, and so on with, with some of that, because it certainly went up in twenty-one versus, versus twenty. Let's see here, uh, medical assists. We did thirty-five medical assists, and that's, so assisting rescue, or where the rescue squad would call us to assist them, um, on one of their calls. We did thirty-five in twenty twenty, thirty-three in twenty-one. Now, also, uh, let's see here. Uh, mental health cases, uh, we're starting to track those better now. The town manager, we're talking today about those, and, um... The town manager, we're talking today about those, and, uh, I don't believe in twenty-twenty, there was a s-, now there's a box on our, on our computer system that allows us to check, um, if it's a mental health, uh, related call. I don't believe that was on in twenty-twenty, uh, it doesn't show up in any of these, and so there's a bit of a checking that box. Um, so it only showed seven in twenty-twenty-one. I know there was, we dealt with many more, uh, mental health incidents, uh, than seven in twenty-twenty-one. So I think I myself went to more than seven calls that, that, you know, mental health, so.
When that box is checked, does it implement a different series of responses from the first department?
No, the box just allows us to track, uh, the mental health calls that, that we've been to. Um, so, um, and like I said, I don't think it was on in twenty-twenty, so I can't really compare, you know, that. And I don't think the numbers are effective enough at this point to, um, compare. Really, the last few months, we've really gone in and tried to, um, make sure those boxes are checked. If, if it has a mental health component. Let's see. Uh, noise disturbances, huge drop in noise disturbances, forty-three in, in twenty-twenty, um, down to twenty-five in twenty-twenty-one. I don't have a, I don't even have a theory for that one, on, on that one, Kaylee, because, um, more people probably were home in twenty-twenty than twenty-one more often, um, you would have thought. I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't even have a theory there, it just lost several.
Could it be that people have just given up complaining about it?
Yeah. Could be, could be.
It is.
Yeah, very possible, yeah.
In a perfect world.
One thing that I wanted to point out also overdose, uh, it only showed two that were listed as, as an overdose. Again, I know for a fact there were more that we responded to, way more than two overdoses. That's where you're suspicious, it depends on how it came in initially to the dispatcher, so, uh, that's where your suspicious calls and the medical calls, a lot of the medical calls, we've been called to assist, uh, the rescue squad are overdose, uh, cases as well, so. So there's kind of three categories that those have, have fit into. So the overdose seems low on this report, and that, that's why it would seem low like that, because it's also mixed into suspicious events and, and, uh, medical calls. So, um, sometimes the rescue squad gets called before we do, and when they realize, you know, what they have, that they may need some help, and so they call us, so. Comes in that way, as a medical call is how it gets categorized. Uh, TRO, so temporary restraining orders and, um, a permanent restraining order or a final restraining order. There's a large increase in that in twenty-twenty-one. We had three, uh, excuse me, we had two, uh, that we served in twenty-twenty. Uh, we, uh, that increased to, uh, sixteen in twenty-twenty-one, so there was a large increase in that. And again, that could be possible too, you know, you have, um, uh, some alcohol, uh, related stuff, more people at home more often um, than probably ever before, um, so a lot of things probably lead up to, um, some of these, some of these calls as well. Um, so I think there is multiple factors. So, um. Vandalism was up in twenty-one, and of course the wanted persons was up in twenty-one, so.
Excellent, so I think Kaylee's right that we wanna, it's great to get this, and it'll probably take a little while to go through it and, and try to understand a little more, but that's, thank you for the comparison.
Sure.
Officially, cause that's super helpful to see if there are patterns and, you know, what's happening. I'm glad to hear you guys are thinking about the alarm.
Eric, Eric, hello.
Hi.
I have a question.
Norma, can you say your name?
Is this, uh, Norma Swalden, um, is this record available online?
It can be, yeah, I can get it to Amanda, I think, right?
We'll, we'll put it on our, in, on the website under the meeting.
Okay.
There's a folder, there's links under the meeting, we'll make sure it's in there.
Okay, great, thank you.
So try, we try to have the, the stuff that we talked about in the meeting in, like, near the minutes and on the website.
You gotta go all the way down to the bottom, there's the agendas at the top, and then the meeting and the minutes and the bottom, so scroll all the way down, they're all in chronological order.
Okay.
Yep.
And it sounds like an interesting report to look at, so.
Right, yes.
Yeah, I think so, please, Eric.
Sure.
All right, any questions for Aaron before we roll on? All right, thank you. Uh, I believe, uh, oh, do we have the, no, electric department as a placeholder? Anybody here from the electric department?
Nobody online.
No. Okay. Is that because we don't? Do we, do we know which, do they come to the typically first or the third?
Usually the third.
Third?
But they didn't come last time.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah, all right. Uh, all right, so moving along, um, item one, select word here from Recreation Trails and the library about their proposed FY twenty-three budgets, and we have folks here, I think, we're all, and then for whatever reason, Rec, Trails and Library are grouped together on our agenda, and then Rescue comes, that comes next, so.
Which one do you want to start?
Let's do it in the order that is written, let's start with Recreation. Do we have somebody here from?
Yeah, Jason was up on the.
Oh, Jason's over there, hi Jason. Oh, hang on, we don't have you yet, we're, we can't hear you yet.
Can you, is it click to join audio right there?
Unmute your speaker for increased volume. Say something to us, Jason, to see if we can hear you.
No.
Hang on, bear with us.
How about now?
You can hear us though, Jason, right? Okay, good.
Can you hear him? I'm here. Yeah. That might be, it might be on his end.
Are you, you're not on mute, Jason, okay.
Is your volume down, Jason? That happens to me all the time.
Oh, volume on the mic?
On the computer. Like if your computer's muted or all the way down.
Our computer, oh.
There's gonna be a kickback.
Wait, we don't want that. Cause of feedback for that.
We want, we want volume, so vol- is volume on on that computer?
No, I meant his computer, because if his computer's vol- if volume is all the way down, then you can't hear it.
Really?
Yep.
Wow. He's checking, so what about checking on that computer, did you check the volume when you were over there?
I think we should move on to the next. Don't forget this.
Volume's up.
Ours is, but what about his?
All right, we're gonna roll on, so stand by, Jason, we're gonna, uh, move to Trails. And, Norma, can you state your, are you here for Trails?
Yes.
Can you state your name again?
Again.
And I'm here to represent the Heart of Trails Committee.
Yes.
And, um, we need, are pretty much, uh, loving funded except for our one employee, we gave a raise to five point nine percent. He did not get a raise last year. And because of the increase in cost of living, we gave him a five point nine percent. All right, we're.
Questions for Norma? Trails, did you?
Seems like a very amusing looking to you, considering all that amazing work for the Trails.
Norma, as I was looking through this, um, I was looking at the actual, and then the proposed, and noticed, noticed that in a lot of cases, there's a lot of difference between what you actually used and what was budgeted last year and what you're asking for. You're not asking for a lot of raises, but the question is, you're what?
Okay.
Why didn't you spend the money that was budgeted?
All right, last year we didn't spend the money that was, uh, budgeted because, partly because Wayne had a knee replacement and wasn't able to do some of the trail repair and construction, and that's, that's one where there's a huge difference. This year abroad, um, so far this year, we spent a hundred and seventy-four percent of our budget as compared to last year, where we spent like two hundred and, um, forty dollars or something like that, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, other than eight hundred dollars. So last year we weren't able to do some of the repair, construction, things like that. Partly it's weather dependent, and partly last year it was COVID dependent. We, we were not able to do some of the things that we wanted to do because of COVID. And, um, I mean, that, the biggest difference I think was in the trail repair and new construction. Whereas this year, we do have a grant that's gonna cover some of our costs this year, but, um, so far we, we've more than spent what we budgeted, so.
Okay. And a knee replacement will slow you down.
A knee replacement slowed Wayne down, and he's our main, uh, employee that does a lot of the work on the trails, so.
Okay, thank you.
And that would explain how with the less expensive publicity if you didn't have events.
Yeah, we just did not have events last year, we didn't, you know, we didn't have, well, we did have bird walk. And we did have some bird walks, but we just didn't do as much, we didn't have pumpkin work, you know, you know. We did do, um, some stuff with the library, the library did a lot of the, the publicity for that. We didn't, we just didn't get around to making signs, which, um, this year we have, uh, done some signs. Eric made us some beautiful signs.
And they were properly stolen.
And they were stolen, right.
Did you refer to that?
Did not record it. Anybody see the sign that says Larry's Legacy?
Yeah.
Big piece of wood, yeah.
So we, we decided to stay with the budget as, you know, as we had not increased, because it's really hard to predict. The money that we don't spend goes back to the town.
Right.
Anyway, so.
More questions for Norma? Good. Good enough for now, thank you, thanks, Norma. Uh, next up is, uh, did we have any luck with, uh?
No.
No?
Should we have him call in or something?
Um.
Yeah.
Alternative, use the phone?
Yeah.
Do.
Yeah.
Do you want me to text him?
Or, no, you can hear us, Jason, do you wanna, um, call, maybe, um, Amanda could have put a note in the chat, yeah? Look at that.
Follow you, since Opie has his phone.
Oh, call me?
There should be a.
Nine one seven four four eight four.
Isn't there a number for the Zoom too?
Oh, is there, uh, yeah, you could.
Yeah, it's on.
Well, but the Zoom is what we can't hear.
But that might be.
Yeah, but he can dial into the meeting by his phone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, 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 it doesn't have.
Okay, so.
He'll just call, he'll just call you.
Dial in on the phone, on the Zoom, dial into Zoom, whatever, that I hear.
As we say, you know how it can be sometimes.
Yes. I do, all right, well, we'll see if this. All right. So if he calls, that'll be interesting to see if we can hear him. We don't have anyone else on who we, to test. Uh, so next will be, after we get rest, will be library.
Got the same question for that, who am I going for?
We could also talk about library while.
Yeah, let's do, uh, unless. You can hear that. Can you answer? You lost your monitor. It's, oh, it's, it's up on the big screen anyway. Oh, that's your computer.
I don't know what happened.
No, we don't know what happened. Did you put your knee against the CPU down the bottom?
Yeah.
We don't know what's happening with, at worst case, we'll do, um, rec another day. I don't know. Don't worry about it. We don't know what's going on over there, something technology related. Okay, so library, who's, who's?
It's what I do for work. If you guys could use technology, I wouldn't have a job.
I'm actually not part of the treasurer or the board, I'm here for Joey, he's out of town.
Great, and you're taking the lead on this?
Yes.
Excellent.
That system is off.
The biggest, the biggest bump here, you probably noticed, were salaries. And the main reason, especially for Kevin, the assistant librarian, who's currently making thirteen seventy-nine an hour. It seemed he's an incredible contributor to the library as a resource, especially in tech. He's a, he's brilliant, he helps everyone out who comes to him with tech issues. And he's making, to be making less than a minimum wage at this point is ridiculous, and gone to people and paid them hit the fifteen dollar mark. And also with the cost of living adjustment, that, with inflation running at six percent, it seemed appropriate to go with a six percent bump for the librarian and the assistant librarian as well. Despite that, the budget increase, if you look at the bottom, we're only adding three thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars to the budget, a two point nine seven percent increase.
I just have a quick question about the set, the salaries, I don't have last year's percent increase, if there was one, but, um, does the library have a consistent, you know, in terms of your employees, a consistent percent increase every year? Or a system, or are you working towards a system where that's sustainable in terms of knowing what inflation is going to be, knowing like supporting your employees, having, or saying, you know, the bare minimum that we're going to pay is fifteen, you're when you evaluate.
Below, the majority of salaries are salaries at a steady rate now. We don't have an established salary, set salary, since there hasn't been any hiring in a long time.
Which is great.
So, yeah, and we want to keep it that way, cause we have, we're really lucky with what we have. But I don't think, anyway, I don't need to argue it further, I don't think.
Well, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
I have a question for you. What, can you just speak a little to the swings in the fiber connection costs, are those not contractually based?
That's Lisa, the librarian, that's your.
The, the fiber, the fiber generally, you get what's called federal E-rate reimbursement, but it comes in very sporadically, like one year we might not get it till halfway through the year, so, which is what happened last year. So we hadn't budgeted for what we actually ended up paying, and then the next year it comes in and we have it for a lot more months, and they did go up. And they did go up $50 a month on it also, so that was a part of the increase. So it's just makes it difficult. That's, that's my answer.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, essentially, it's the same thing to you that I was asking, Norma. I have no problem with the salaries and this stuff, but you get down here to the custodial service and this sort of thing, you budgeted for $9,300 and some last year, you spent $5,000 and yet you're budgeting for $9,300 again. And that tends to be a pattern through the short section.
One of the reasons for that is we expected the addition to be built for this past fiscal year. We had increased the budget for custodial for cleaning, so.
And as a way to adjust for that, if you look at, on the miscellaneous, some of that overage that we have from this year's, because we ended up not hiring more custodial service and not having as much heating, although I have to say with the heating, we are very lucky that the town has it at 2.44 per gallon right now because it has gone up everywhere for people that don't have, you know, a buying plan. And when I looked up from the United States Energy Information Agency and their predictions all the way up through next year, it's going to be more up at 3.50 a gallon. So depending on what the town negotiates with whichever oil provider, you know, it's hard to adjust for that, but I felt that we had made it higher thinking we'd have the addition, but then I've made it higher again because, again, I think next year is really going to be a lot more on oil.
So you're, but you're anticipating all those services, the oil, custodial, et cetera, as anticipating the new addition?
Yes.
Again, or still.
Yes, and we really need to have this happen.
And again, what didn't get spent went back to the town.
Well, we carry over money and that's why I'm.
Well, you do.
But that's why we're putting in a larger miscellaneous income in there online, on the miscellaneous income line.
But you carry this over, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Lucky you.
Yes, harder than the library law.
Library is the only one that has that fund balance, unlike.
Yeah, trails used to have something like that because we didn't, we weren't accounting separately for the donations. So what we did to solve that is we created a capital fund for trails so donations can go into that and then the regular budget that we just looked at, it gets under spent, goes back to the town like all the others. So in this case, you guys have carried forward $10,000 from last year. Am I reading that correctly?
From last year to this year, there's a difference of, we had an extra $2,000.
So do people understand that?
So we, in order to meet our budget this year, we had to bring, we have to raise $8,000 miscellaneous income, but the fund balance covers that more. So there's actually, actually another $1,000, what, $300 or something that. And our miscellaneous income is down considerably because of COVID, because we don't have as many people coming to the book sale and stuff like that. So instead of having an annual miscellaneous income this year of about $300 a month, we're getting more like $200 a month or less, so.
Okay.
So having that carryover helps us. We're going to carry over quite a bit from this year that won't be spent.
Where you get the $13,000.
They will get the $13,000 plus whatever we do bring in from small donations and the miscellaneous income things that we get.
Okay, all right. We got it. We can understand. Everybody? More questions for the library? You're okay with it? Others? Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hope your tech problems go well.
Yeah. Jason, if you say something, can you say something and see if we can hear you? No, we cannot. Would you bump your, your volume, Amanda?
It's short, it's coming through, it's weird.
Because now that the other one is not on. Say something again, Jason?
No, he's on mute.
Oh, it looks like you're on mute. Oh, that's okay.
He's on mute on his computer.
Oh, that's okay.
So he's on his phone.
You're on your phone and you still can't hear. Okay.
All right. You guys hear me okay?
Uh, we can hear you faintly. You're going to have to speak up.
Okay, is that better?
Just keep, keep it loud. Go ahead. Tell us about the rec budget.
I'm scared of the best I can do here. But you have these run of recs that.
Yep.
We don't want to maintain, reveal, change this budget. We only increase it. We want to delay and do a few things that have done the past. We need programming to be two lines, with binding and polyprogram, or programming, training and pre-op ed, gear programming, all through one umbrella, one four lines.
Okay.
That's all.
Yep.
Okay. I think that would offer a more flexible, I'm just hoping against the new spring, but it sounds like the COVID, you have to do that rather than have it just there for another year or so, putting in more of a vague umbrella, these programs, those calories as we did and that we keep going. The opportunity arrives to do, to do it, but it's not going to cover it in that line anymore.
Okay.
I think, Jason, I can also speak to questions too. It's hard for you to, this is Gail.
Tell us about the rec coordinator. It's like you were without one for a while, right? Is that why your salary is so low in the last actual? And now, you have?
Jason's the recorder.
Oh, Jason is the recorder. Ah.
That's correct, that's correct.
Oh, and we have feedback, feedback, feedback.
So I could also.
So that, my turn, all right.
I could also speak, I serve on the rec committee. I can speak to the youth programming as well.
Yeah.
So similar to what we've just heard from all the other committees, with COVID, we were able to do, we weren't able to do as much youth programming. So that's why that line is lowered, but we still have a plan. And we've been doing more youth programming this year anyway, but that's why it's lower.
All right. Are you guys able to find swim instructors in the summer?
Yeah, so that's in the youth program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, that was a big problem.
So right now, right now, it's through the beach program and we go to the swimming pool in Stowe.
Oh.
We're working on potentially partnering with Cranesboro to do something at Caspian again. So, but yes, that includes the swim program.
Okay. Excellent. More rec questions? Rec budget? Now, people good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Hear me okay, Stowe?
Yeah.
So the one thing that we discussed a ways back was the capital, and we'd like to transfer from the capital, well, to capital from the actual rec budget, and add about $100 to that capital that's already there from the actual rec budget. I think Eric talked about that a ways back, to slowly increase that amount based on the rec budget. That reads the bell, do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, I don't have it in front of me right now.
That's right here.
But fortunately, our town manager came prepared and Amanda's probably got it somewhere too.
So it's this one right here.
It's right here.
The transfer to capital.
Transfer to capital.
We're going to take $1,000 out and put it into our three-year plan and within the capital.
Except everyone, no?
No.
Who's picking it?
So it's not an actual increase to the budget.
So in this one, is this what we're talking about?
It's not capital.
That we talked about when they requested the $5,000. It's for the ice rink for repairs and all that.
Okay. Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Got it. Got it, all right.
Good deal.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing with us. Thank you.
All right. All right, next, we have rescue.
I'm Lindsay Osteen. I'm the president of Hardwick Rescue, and I have John Villamans here with me on my vice president.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Tell us about rescue and what you're requesting from the town hardware.
So the major change in our budget is, as you know, our budget is shared in terms of appropriations amongst the town based upon an average of your call volumes spanned over five years. So that's at the bottom of the budget that we provided, breaks down the appropriated rate for 2022. So you have to think about your portion of our total budget as we're not asking for you to pay for our entire budget. So the main change for us is payroll. We spent our $100,000 last year. We have two full-time paid employees. We have a full-time paramedic and we have a full-time AEMT. We also have one PDM AEMT who doesn't do that many hours, yes.
What is an AEMT?
An AEMT is an advanced emergency medical technician.
And what does that mean?
So an EMT is MS, emergency medical services, which is what we are. We have first responders who cannot be a licensed provider solely on an ambulance and EM on-site training, pre-hospital care, or if you're based.
I'm not in medical.
Yeah, no, I forget. We do it all the time.
Okay.
So we have essentially two full-time paid employees, one PDM employee who doesn't, who joined us late in the, in the year, and we're increasing our budget for our third full-time provider at a minimum of the advanced EMT level. So that's our main budgetary change. With that came increasing our health insurance as we do provide health insurance if our employees elect to take it. We cover 80% of that and we also do two weeks of paid vacation, whether that's sick time or, do you have our budget to put up?
Yes.
Oh.
So everyone's on the same page? Sorry.
Do you guys have?
We don't have it. We're all at the U provided desk.
Yep, that's, that's.
They have it.
We all have it up for this.
Oh, you don't? Okay, that's fine. I emailed it, but, okay, so our professional services was flatlined at $6,000. We have a bookkeeper and we have, I think payroll is under that too, right? Our ambulance fund went from $12,000 to $15,000. This is for repair and maintenance to the ambulances we currently have. We had to add some suspension changes. We had an air compressor go, so ambulances are expensive to maintain. You can imagine a set of tires for those. So our billing service, that would be our payroll. Our dispatch, we use Lemoyle County and they went up slightly, which is to reflect the small increase there. We didn't increase our equipment budget. Our insurance actually went down. We received no monetary compensation, so this would cover T-shirts, I think that's something, and then the health insurance. This would be our supplies in terms of medications, the tools that we use on the ambulance, having to pay more for utilities. And then our ambulance capital fund, which is to help us replace our ambulances, we didn't change that and we also didn't change our building or equipment capital funds. And our ambulance tax went up slightly to the state. Change to, as I put in the letter to, yes.
I think it's important if you speak to how many hours your volunteers work over the course of a year. I have the numbers, the 4,000. So it's, it's a lot of volunteer.
And drivers, some of our volunteers are not licensed providers in the state. We're required to have two providers on the ambulance at all times. So you're talking about a crew of three regardless. So our average, so that's divided amongst those. We have some that took breaks over the pandemic and were slowly.
You're all over yourself now.
So yeah, two years to renew our license. We train every month. We meet every month, board meetings, community events. I'm one of the CPR instructors. We don't, you know, we pretty much flat fund that ourselves, so it's a lot of time that's given to our communities. We're happy to do it.
There is an organization, the name of which has just escaped me, that calculates the value of volunteer time. And they break it out by specialized and ordinary, just run-of-the-mill volunteers. It would be interesting to see exactly what the value of those 22,000 hours amounts to if those people were paid, because in effect, that is contributing to the health and well-being of the community that the taxpayers are not paying for. Can you think of the name of the organization?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, it's gone. But it's, it's a stunning statistic when you look at how much money these people are providing the town by just doing this on their own time.
I just want to start by saying it's such an incredibly valuable service that we have. And personally, all of my experiences with volunteers and paid staff have been incredible and very fast. And we're really, really fortunate to have everyone at HRS. I did have just a couple of questions about your letter and the budget.
Sure.
You mentioned in the letter, thinking about how your station is limited.
Yes.
And so I was wondering about the building capital fund and then what, you know, if there's a goal for that fund to then be either retrofitting the current station or like kind of where that is leading to.
So we have completely outgrown our space. We really need a new building with a larger footprint, which is impossible in that location, unfortunately. So we have started a committee who's looking into possible locations. We clearly do a large capital campaign through all of the communities that we service. I don't remember how much is in our capital fund.
6,600.
That's over a year, but is it?
No, it's, would be our entire fund. It wouldn't pay for the entire building, but we, we don't actually have sleeping quarters for free, I think you would agree. So it would be nice to give some people who are giving all of that time and not getting paid at least a decent place to sleep and cook a meal. We don't have a kitchen. We have a microwave. So we're a very bearable organization. So we will be looking to find a new space within Hardwick. We have no intentions of leaving Hardwick. It's centrally located, so. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Absolutely, absolutely. It also seems like a question we could, I would love to have, help, help support that. That does answer the question. And I imagine it's the same in the equipment.
I just want to interject that, I mean, we do, we have another town service that's right next door that also has outgrown its building.
Right.
And maybe it's a good talk to me to work together.
Yeah, I think so.
It's a very similar story of.
Trucks, I mean, it's, it's all important stuff.
As you're proceeding.
Yeah.
Stay in communication with the.
Yep.
Independent Sector is the name of the organization. Release the new value of volunteer time. This is a national average, but the national average, and this is also averaging 1,054 cents per hour. Multiply that times your 22,000 hours. That's stunning. Well, and it's good information to have to leverage for potential grant writing. Have you found, have you been looking, are there COVID grants or is there anything that?
So there are grants out there. We, we are a mostly volunteer operation. So it is challenging to commit enough money to run an organization and ask members to, we operate 24/7, like I won't call it tonight, um, to then also take time to write grants that none of us have any experience in, and we would have to budget to pay someone to help us with that, so. Um, there are grants available out there, we certainly apply for all of those small, local grants. Greensboro is always very gracious to our organization, um, so we do apply for those, but the federal grants, it would take me probably two months just to at this point-
Thank you.
A five-year call span?
Yes.
Is that reviewed every year?
Yes.
Great, um, and then this is, I guess, more of a question for us. I'm just thinking about our ARPA funds, and-
I was, I was too.
And how one of the very, I mean, we're very limited in what we can spend ARPA funds on, so maybe we could- That doesn't change what you're asking for, that's just really us thinking about how we're going to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah, interesting.
I think your numbers are dropping.
They're dropping.
Um, so, we have some members who've been doing this for over 50 years. We're one injury away from not being able to staff that ambulance 24/7, so that's the addition of that third person. You know, COVID certainly impacted every healthcare organization, um, we're not alone in that, but this is a reality that we've been slowly creeping up on pretty consistently every year, because we just, I mean, the national volunteerism is falling, people don't want to work for free. Sadly, this town's no different than the next, so we have to anticipate that, so that, you know, when we get one injury, we can still function as an organization.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other?
You have more questions for Lindsay?
No.
Thank you for including the letter, it was really great to see all of that.
Yeah, thanks so much for coming.
Absolutely, thanks, Alex.
Thanks more for, uh, running the Rescue Squad. Alright, so, we're gonna roll on to, like, item three is what's worth discussing, authorize town mayor to approve the sewer line. Boy, that's a long-
Yeah, so, we have the master lease agreement with the state-
Yeah.
With the sewer line going down by like, strattens-
Yeah.
Down through there, and Eric Clark needs to put in a sewer that goes down and tie it into the main. So they're working on the lease agreement, so we'll have to add.
So that's a lease with the-
Be trans and the rail-
With the rail division.
Yep.
Because that, oh yeah, they still have all that.
Yep.
They did offer to let us have it all.
We should have taken it.
We still can.
I don't think so.
Oh, really?
I don't know, I think that, that's becoming more valuable.
I don't know, we declined because there are a lot of, um-
Right, in that area, that, uh, the railroad still holds that by, across the Woke Street, like by Pool and Lumber. But they, they hang, they hung onto it on the other side of Woke Street, so this is just, I need to-
I think they still have it from, I think Pool and-
Beyond Pool?
Island, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, so this is just for, just to be able to sign off on that.
I'd like to, also, for the scheduled motion that we authorize town mayor to approve that amendment to the master license agreement between the state of Vermont, Agency of Transportation, and the town of Hardwick for the water and sewer line, second?
Great, right.
Fee of like 2,500.
Just to have our sewer there.
Yep.
Which is less than what we would make of the sewage rate for adding that.
Alright, any more discussion about leasing for the sewer line? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, they're preparing it.
Yeah.
Yep, so we're just waiting for it?
They're gonna need to sign it.
Yes.
Yes.
I will need to sign it.
Yes. Uh, great, and next is, item four is, uh, select word to discuss the governor's new legislation about mask mandates within, uh, just handling this issue, decided to punt it to the towns, so here we are. And, uh, so that, uh, my understanding, I actually could not find the legislation today, so. But my understanding is towns have the ability to, um, uh, enact a temporary mask mandate for public spaces in the town.
Until April of next year.
Of '22?
That's the timeline, according to the governors.
And then you have to re-up it or something?
Right, every 30 days or so, okay.
So that's the, yeah.
Alright, so-
And it has to do only with public spaces within the town?
Yeah.
Doesn't have anything to do with schools or churches?
Correct.
Right.
Oh.
Right. Right.
Okay.
It's correct.
A few people in the audience too, so, imagine. Yes? Nope, hi.
I, I tried to get on Zoom to get you, but, uh, it didn't work, um-
Could you state your name, please?
Judith Ruskin.
Yeah.
I, um, I was concerned, I, I watched the Burlington Town Council, and, um, and then all of a sudden I see that you have it on your agenda, so I'm very curious to know who put it on the agenda, and, uh, and, um, and what. And I'm not a public speaker, so I'm gonna try and organize my thing, you can- The Burlington Civic Council was really a heated affair, and, and one of the council people, uh, basically said, "We're doing this because you, you all were so rowdy," you know? It was a, it really was a painful thing to, to realize that our council people or select people are punitive, and then they were calling the people that are so very concerned about these mask mandates, uh, as, as being, um, children. So, so, uh, so I just am concerned about what might happen in Hardwick, and, and further, please excuse if I'm not, uh, further, um, oh, who's it? Oh, there are fines in Burlington if you don't do it, and, and then there's a $50 one, up to a $500 one, and, and if you've repeatedly done it, then you go to jail, and it's, it's, it's just very frightening to me, and I really want to know what your agenda is, why it's tonight that you've put it on, and want to be part of the conversation.
Great, so, yes, why we put it on, so we put it on the agenda for tonight, because we only meet twice a month, and we wanted to discuss it.
Because of last night in Burlington?
No.
No, our agenda is set, uh, a week ahead, essentially.
Because of the governor's action.
We don't like to operate based on what Burlington did, ever.
I can speak to you, so, to what Eric said earlier, basically, this mandate was punted to the towns, and if we don't have a conversation about it, we're not taking action on it tonight, we're having a conversation about it, but we even had a conversation about it together as a select board, or with the public, about what it means and what it could mean. So, basically, it came to us, so we're gonna talk about it, which is what we're doing, so.
It's our responsibility.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll beg your forgiveness, I'm not a resident.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Bill Moore, I'm from Johnson, um, but I, I can help you find the bill, uh, if you want to see it, it's on, there's only one operative paragraph, you do need to click and change the session you're looking at when you're searching the bill.
Oh.
And I do have it up, second, I was in the legislature, I do work there, but I was there volunteering, helping some folks for the whole day during the session, so I'm very familiar with the bill, and I was in Burlington last night observing, so. If I can be of any help, I can, if I can be of any help, I'd be happy to, but I don't have a say in here in Hardwick.
Yeah.
Um, so just, uh, if you want me to help you find the bill-
Oh, sure, I'll find it, okay, just-
You, you pretty much have the description right, the first passage is up to 45 days.
Yeah.
And then it would need to be renewed for only 30 days at a time, up to the date of the death of the bill, um, which is in April, and, uh, it is restricted to indoor public spaces only, not including any school facilities, which are under a different set of rules through the Department of Education or Agency of Education.
I'm so sure, you said not churches either.
No churches or schools.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to help.
Others?
Um, Nancy Noderman, and, um, I, I know what the governor, um, had the leg, or the legislature passed, as you said, it is pointing to the towns, and I wish he hadn't done that, but, um, as a former healthcare provider, and an ICU nurse, and, um, having lost some friends to COVID, and with the, um, infection rate now, I believe it's over 5%, that the commu-, um, community, community spread number, I mean, it's gone from 2.1 to all the way up to that, which is a rather high number, and we've never had it before. I just feel like it's worth a discussion, I would love the town to implement it. Um, of course, some people are like, how do you enforce a mask mandate? Which I realize, yeah, that's a problem, but if we can even get 20% more people to wear a mask indoors, like, I'm seriously looking around here, wondering why people don't have masks on. Um, because it's, it's devastating to a lot of people, and it's not about just us, and it's an individual, it's about what we can cause happen to other people, and I just hope there's a fair and honest discussion, and do I gather you, you wouldn't vote on something tonight, it would be at a later time?
Uh, I don't know yet.
Oh, okay, I mean, I don't know how the process would go.
We just had it in our agenda, Nancy, as a discussion, so that's just why-
It would, it certainly would be within the prerogative of the board to take action, I think, but, um, I don't know, I don't know that we are, we're just discussing, this is like, late breaking news, right? All this is unfolding kind of now, and so we're just trying to have a discussion.
Okay, and as I said, I was an ICU nurse at a point in my life, and what, and I know people that are working in ICUs, and unless, everyone needs to realize what these people are dealing with that work there, because the kind of days they're having every single day, 24 hours a day, are what I experienced three times a month, maybe? And just to put that in perspective, we have to take care of our healthcare system, and masks are one way of doing it, since there are people that seem to not understand about getting vaccinated, so, that's my reason for being here.
Is there anyone who hasn't spoken who would like to say something, or? Okay, we have someone online as well.
Amanda, if they raise their hand, maybe you could put a message.
Do I, I didn't state your name.
Right now, well, yeah, um, uh, maybe I can just sort of give my feeling about the mask. The studies that have been done find that masks don't work, and I, I feel-
I think I would disagree.
I think?
I, I would disagree with that.
Well, many, many have been, many, many that have been done have found that they don't work, okay? I shouldn't say all, but many, okay? So, um, for me, my health is my responsibility. My responsibility is not for somebody else's health. If I wear a mask, then I am hampering my health, okay?
You're hampering, you're hampering your health?
I'm hampering my health if I wear a mask, yes, because the, the whole thing about health is, you breathe out, come on the outside, which you don't want to keep inside, which the masks do, and you want to breathe in oxygen. How do you do that when you have a mask on? I can't, I have difficulty breathing with a mask on.
Okay.
And I'm getting all this nasty stuff that's in my mask, in my body. That's not helping anybody, not me, not anyone else, it's my responsibility for my health. I don't have to go to the doctor to know that I am responsible for my health. I don't have to pass it on to a doctor or anybody else, God gave me my immune system that I need to take care of. And here's something that I just actually sent an email to a strategic person at the, um, City Council last night.
This, this-
Burlington? What city council?
What city coun, what city are you talking about?
Burlington City Council.
What has that got to do with us?
What does that have, it's-
Right, but this is not Burlington, it's nothing to do with us.
No, I know it isn't, but it's my feelings about the whole thing.
I get your feelings about the whole thing. You know, if there's somebody else-
Okay. Can I say a couple more words? Oh, you do?
Yeah. Give us a second.
Has anybody raised their hand?
No.
Uh, I think they're just listening at this point.
Oh, okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to point out that, um, there was a recent study from researchers at Stanford and Yale, that are recently published, I guess, that, that showed a fairly large, um, study, that, that showed a, a real, uh, decrease in COVID-19 transmission due to mask wearing.
Did you actually read that study?
I didn't read the whole study yet.
Sure, the numbers are different.
Yeah.
Statistically valid.
Yeah.
However, those numbers are almost imperceptible, if you actually look at the, look at the numbers, the raw data as to infection masks versus infection non-mask, I think that you'd be surprised at the result. Yes, there is a difference, the people that wear masks do have less incident, it's not even worth mentioning.
Ha, I read 10%, is that not correct?
It's definitely not correct.
I just want to caution us against having a debate against whether or not masks work or not, because that's not actually why we're here.
That's a great idea.
So what we're actually talking about is what the governor asked towns to decide or not decide, so, and I personally have gotten a lot of feedback from, they haven't asked me to read anything on the record, but I've heard from a lot of individuals, some saying, "I would feel safer in my community if more people wore masks," fair, and other people saying, "I don't want to be told to wear masks," also fair. So I just wanted to mention that I've gotten lots of different backwards, you know, everyone has different feelings about this. Um, I personally, I work in the school system, I work with lots and lots of unvaccinated kids, um, to put in a mask mandate, because there's a lot that we would have to do to figure out how that works. And it's new, we're just seeing Burlington doing, we're seeing the effects of that, we have some time to have this discussion. At the same time, we also are seeing the highest rates of COVID in our community here and across the state. That's with higher rates of vaccination. So, I also think it's important that the town, that we could, I think we could do more to either encourage masks, to support businesses that are already requiring masks, and they are taking it on themselves for either the safety of their employees, or their customers, or both. I personally can't speak to that, because I don't own a business in Hardwick, um, but I think we, I think there are things that we could do as a town to, to help provide, whether it's signage for businesses, putting signs in town, saying masks are encouraged. Fate is very complicated, I don't think we're ready for that, or what that could even mean. Um, that's just my personal feeling, but, um, I do, you know, Hardwick Elementary School has had 14 positive cases since the start of school, which is in the, a, a large amount for the state, um, we see it happening all the time, positive cases. Hardwick as a town has over, has between four, as of today, between 41 and 80 positive cases, which is more than any other town in our surrounding area, like, it's here, it's like, COVID is here, the pandemic is not going away anytime soon, unfortunately, as our AEMT said. So I think this is an opportunity to have a discussion about how we're going to continue to keep people in our community safe. Um, I don't know if that's a mandate, I don't think it's a mandate, but it certainly is encouraging masks, it's encouraging safe behavior, that's my mind.
Do you want to go?
Pardon me?
Sure.
Um, I spent 16 years working in the public school system, and one of the most firm lessons I took away from that is you never make a rule unless you're prepared to enforce it. And I don't see how the town of Hardwick can enforce a rule saying you have to wear masks in a public space. Aaron, could, could you guys?
No, but I'll, and I'll speak to it in a minute too.
Okay, that, that just- if we say you have to do this and people don't do it, then we have simply put ourselves in a situation of being sort of a toothless tiger. So I agree that we should encourage it. We should do whatever we can to encourage it. But I think we ought not to mandate it because we can't enforce a mandate.
Do you want me to next?
Yes, please.
Okay, so as a business owner, we do require our customers to wear masks. We wear masks when our customers are in the business. It's a small store. It's Christmas. It's always crowded if there are more than four people in there. So we will continue to do that into the future. Daryl and I are it at the store. If one of us gets sick, we're both fully vaccinated and boosted. But if one of us gets sick, the store closes. That's it. It's done, because we won't be able to have it open. We don't have employees. We don't have backup for that sort of thing. So as a business owner, that's how I deal with it. I feel pretty safe in this building, because there is a policy in this building that if you're not vaccinated, you should wear a mask. And I'm trusting that people are honest and they wear a mask as a responsible person if they're not vaccinated. I also keep my distance, you know? And I don't feel like, as much as I'd like to see more people masking and in smaller spaces indoors, I don't feel like there's any way to enforce a mandate or even, I just don't see it being a positive step. So I wouldn't see us doing that at this time, anyway.
Can I ask a question? So you have masks outside. It's very clear that masks are required. Do you ever get opposition to that, or is it basically everybody?
Every once in a while. Every once in a while we do. You know, sadly, the masks that we were able to order are crappy, and they have glue instead of strings. And so in the cold weather, they're popping. And so people are frustrated by that. Honestly, I don't understand if you're going to come and visit a store that's indoors like ours. And all of my posts on Facebook and stuff, I say mask shopping. I don't know why people don't have a mask in their pocket if they want to come in. But, so we have some crappy masks that we offer complimentary to our customers. Sometimes they are irritating. And I have a lot of them. So those are going to be the ones we have, unless this town wants to buy me some. That's what we have, just saying. But yeah, we do have some people that don't, that simply can't come in. And that's too bad, because we have a lot of great stuff. But, you know, apparently they're going to find it some other way. We also offer curbside pickup still. We also have a website. We'll mail things to you. You can call us on the phone. But that's the only way we can deal with that. People are not coming in without a mask, period.
I've heard from a lot of different people that, I have only heard tonight any even remote positive feedback as to implementation of a masking ban. Every single person that I've heard from in person or via email or phone has been vehemently opposed to it. And I do know people factually that are shopping based on requirements. If a business is requiring them to use a mask, they won't go in the store. They'll do their business elsewhere. I mean, that's their choice, much like wearing a mask is their choice, much like taking a low-dose aspirin if you have heart problems is a choice. The government, it's a slippery slope that we would never get away from. I personally would be very, very opposed to a mandate of any sort. And I might be the first one in court with a ticket. And it might be intentional. But there would be others that definitely feel exactly the same way, that they're willing to push that system and the rights and responsibilities of the legislature or the select board as to whether we have the authority, regardless of what the legislature says. But as far as I know, this is still working its way through the court systems as far as mandates at all are concerned. The vaccine mandates, the mask mandates. And so far, the courts aren't really looking at it very favorably, from what I can tell. I don't see this end being any different than those others. I would be opposed to any sort of a mandate.
Just a couple things I want to add. I'll try to keep my personal feelings out of it, but just. The League did put out, I don't know if anybody was able to see those.
The what?
The League.
The person that went out, that they put out, should towns do that. It hasn't been in discussion this week amongst many of the Vermont chiefs. And I guess the biggest thing I'll bring out is that any of the chiefs involved in that discussion we're not recommending to their select boards. This is actually coming up this week in a lot of different boards. So Burlington's not exclusive, nor are we. It was expected to come into a lot of board meetings this week. And any of the chiefs involved in the discussions over our, you know, email chain that we have, we're not recommending any type of enforcement, the policy with enforcement action.
Penalty.
Penalties. We just don't have the manpower to do it. We're not exclusive to that. Many of the departments in the state don't have the manpower to enforce, write tickets. We've also seen around the country and in this state alone very heated opinions, both pro and con, et cetera, for masks and so on. Even, you know, tonight, everybody's civil. But there's very obvious opinions, differing opinions. And so we also need to take that into effect, I think. Or I would recommend you take that into consideration, because you're going to tax the police departments with a lot more than just an enforcement. Stores already have these in place in the communities, you know, in stores especially. They have that ability. The state has allowed the ability. It's unfortunate.
If it's a private business, you can do what you want to do.
Right, exactly.
It's not a mandate. It's just a policy.
Right, they allow for you as a business owner to say, if you're in my store, you have to wear a mask. So that is already.
And I could do it into the future, if I wanted to, forever. If I thought I'd have customers.
Right. So, you know, you can repeat.
It's not a mandate.
Right, but the state allowed for individual businesses to do that. That was one of the things. So that's, yeah, we don't have the ability or the manpower to enforce. And there would be an increase, a large increase in calls when this first, at least it was that on. So hopefully I've kept my personal feelings out of it and just wanted to give you a little information, a little feedback on where maybe some other, that's actually taken action so far. Other ones are taking it up over the next week or two.
Should I read?
Hartford rejected.
Yeah.
We do have Paul's hands up.
We don't know if he'll hear it, but we can.
He's muted right now.
Unmute your speaker, Paul.
We turn Paul.
Thank you. It's very difficult to be on Zoom, because we can't watch the video. We have to use a separate device. Thank you for listening to me. This is Paul Six in Hardwick. I'm calling to say I stay in pretty close touch with COVID protocols, because I teach a Tai Chi class for the Council on Aging. And one thing I'd like to add to this discussion is that the U.S. Centers for Disease Control considers the amount of COVID in our area high enough to warrant a recommendation that we wear masks in indoor spaces. So I suspect there are people who question the CDC, but I don't think there's a higher authority in the U.S. on masking and its effectiveness. So I just suggest that, you know, there are just relatively objective national measures in place. The other thing is, I certainly applaud Kaylee and Wiz suggesting that recommending masking is a good thing. And I know it's a long discussion to probably make recommendations and establish protocols. But I would say that, you know, we tend to look at our superiors, if you will, our leaders, for guidance. And so I would suggest that if the town is wanting to suggest that people wear masks, that the select board and attendees at select board meetings do so of their own volition as an example to the rest of the town. And that's all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that. You know, I still think, you know, we have the, Hardwick Neighbor to Neighbor Group has done an incredible job during this pandemic in supporting the safety of our town. They are their own group. They're not really affiliated with the town of Hardwick. I really do think that we could maybe put our heads together, whether it's with the Hardwick Neighbor to Neighbor Group about how we, you know, they had, for a while, they had signs up on Claudia's building about wearing masks and being safe. Really, now it's just private businesses that have that information. And I think, you know, we also have, it's amazing. We have the fire department has regular testing, which is always busy. We're going to have some vaccine clinics, according to Tom. I think we could do more to advertise that and also to get it out into the community. I think it's our responsibility to do that. It's not requiring it, but it's just letting more people know that if you wear masks, you'll be safe, you'll keep other people safe, whether it's social distancing, you know, whatever else we could do to help kind of get that information out there. Then it's still people's choice. It's not saying you have to do this. It's just telling more people that those things are available. I also think it's really important, you know, we see a lot of state data. That's like what we hear about all the time. But our county and town data is really different. And I do think it's important to say that only 68% of our county is fully vaccinated. And that's significantly less than our 93%, or whatever, no, 83% of the state. And the majority of the demographic within that are people my age. They're 18 to 35-year-olds.
Who are or are not.
Who are not vaccinated. That's the lowest percentage group. So whether there's some people that we can get, as Paul was saying, to kind of model, this is actually something that's good. That could be their choice. But that's, I just wanted to throw that out there, because I think that 68% to me was kind of shocking. I thought it would be a little bit higher. But that also includes kids. So kids are low, but anyway, I just wanted to mention it.
Didn't this vaccine come out with the purported result that it was supposed to stop people from getting COVID? Wasn't that the initial story that was given?
Also, not the conversation we're having. I just, we can't, we can't go down that route, Michael, because we also have an executive session. So I don't know if we want to take action tonight or like talk more about it or hear more about it. But it's.
I'm not hearing anybody making a motion from our discussion to propose a mask mandate. So I don't see that we're taking an action necessarily. But I like your suggestion of.
But more information would be good.
Yeah, perhaps working with neighbor to neighbor on pushing information.
And continuing to have people realize, like, we have voting next week on December 9th. In this building, if you are not vaccinated, you're expected to wear a mask to keep yourself and others safe.
Is that up here?
It's on the doors.
No, I mean, it's in this room, right?
Voting, I believe so.
Before we stop this, the discussion. Hardwick is a great community. When there's problems within the community, we rally together and help each other out. I think that this pandemic has been, has weighed on us all. And I think that if we can do things to help each other, if people feel comfortable with other people around wearing a mask, I think that's what we should be doing. It's important that we work together with this and not, creating a mandate would just further divide the community with this issue. And I think, you know, if this were to happen, you know, 50 years ago, we'd all be on board with trying to get through this. And a lot of people are skeptical of numbers, skeptical of the government, skeptical of just things that they don't even know why they're skeptical of. So I just think that you need to like look at your neighbor and look at the people you work with. And like, those are the people that you're protecting. So that's an important aspect, I think, to approach it at.
Nancy, add your hand up.
Just that, I thought Paul had a great suggestion. We just, really important. Our leaders should be modeling a mask, even though I didn't know what the rules were for the building. And I might suggest, if you've got this voting happening, that's a big chunk of people, that maybe everybody should just wear a mask to come in and do the vote. Maybe I'm totally off base, but. And everyone in our community. And that is the bottom line. And if you guys can help educate and get more, get the word out there and assist business owners, because I like Sherri, if one of us gets sick, our business is really in a bad way. We are in trouble. And we had one of our workers that had COVID, and we all then had to isolate. And I'll tell you, we did not, fortunately, we did not come down with COVID. But it was a tough couple of weeks. So that's it. Thank you. Thank you for a good discussion, I think, and for keeping it on a health issue.
If you don't mind. I want to compliment you folks. I mean, you had a discussion. And in Burlington, it was a very ugly divisive thing. And one of the strongest arguments was that doing something that's enforcement sanction-based will further divide the community. And they didn't listen to that, and they passed the thing. The issue of enforcement was not addressed by the State House. I tried to testify on it. They refused to allow my testimony. So it wasn't properly addressed and tossed in your lap. Which brings me to the points you've made here. The Bangladesh study was 335,000 people, over 600 villages. It was strictly intervention in public education. And the numbers, there was 11% increase overall population reduction in positive case loads. In those villages, by, well, by just intervening and educating people, they increased mask use. There was never any.
And they only narrowed it to like 50% or something.
And right, and also, they also noticed as they educated people on mask use that more people were exercising social distancing in a more automatic way. There was an especially good effect on elderly populations, which we could read as compromised immune system populations. But it was all evident, it was all public education, free masks, signage. And they did mention leaders exhibiting and modeling behavior. So you're in trouble there, but that's exactly. And it looks to me like that's where you've landed on that idea that as a community, you can increase this, you can do this without this rule sanction model. So I strongly encourage you to pass along that line and look for methods and tools and resources to do that. Thanks for listening to me. I'm not here.
I'd like to wrap this up, so we can do our.
Let's move on.
So we can do the rest of those things. So thank you, everyone, for coming and participating. We don't often have as much participation, and we appreciate your taking the time and coming out. Next, select board reports. New business, old business.
I just have a really good old business. Casey had mentioned at her last meeting, talking to Don Montgomery about the property next to the bathroom. I called and left a message, but I haven't been able to actually have a conversation with him.
And you're still on it.
She spoke. Casey spoke.
Oh, okay, great. Great, or maybe, I don't know.
I don't know the results of the conversation.
So it's going forward in one way or the other. Great.
All right, got it. Thank you for bringing that back.
Sure.
Any other reports, new business, old business? All right, so how about a motion to enter executive session to include the town manager to discuss police contracts? to include the town manager to discuss police contracts? And that is VSA.
Oh, sorry, I haven't. It's VSA 313A.
313A?
Okay.
That's what, that's what the internet said.
Yeah, you're right. It is 13.
And so Wiz makes a motion.
Second.
Kayla makes a second. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we go.
Downstairs. I'm going to put my mask on, because we're going to be in a smaller room.
Yes.
I didn't bring my purse.
Down, down, down we go.